Sami de, Andy Kankamel, me chesan, so sana, Aldo Mohammed, Nsuel, me ches, me nyomu, Edi, and Koma. Aldo, good morning.
Good morning.
Na, bibia boko de.
Oh, boko.
Andy, morning.
Morning, Sammy.
Bibia boko de.
Obua de deyachay, onama ye.
Me deyachay.
Kameaka.
So, so we say Aldo, Aldo Ayama, this is the third time, meboa.
Kasabi Bree, me say ah. Now Ghana, what is democracy? The particular event, you know, oh, Moya, we have shown there is democracy. Particular event, now, eh, be a client man Ghanaian to come and ask public officials questions. And no question, eh, eh, democracy, where you know, eh, aside the B now eh, because yeah, Benyama, I know say, originally, eh, be our own program, be own penny, eh, my course so, if I want to, at least allow government to do what it wants to do, for Ghanaians to decide. But okay, demonstrations, even at a forum like this, ah, you don't expect police to leave you. Oh, my Moya side, you know, the, the, eh, me, me, Joe, say, sir, eh, eh, your friends say, eh, town hall meeting, no, it's about education on the E level. And that's what government intends to, to, to do, to, to tell the people what they, eh, the importance of the, why are buying at this time all needed E level, crucial moment, at this crucial moment after devastation or COVID, on here E level. So that is it. And I've also heard some people, I know you may go there, you in particular, about this thing, about auditor general's report. Say, people have made this argument, say, say, ten billion, eh, eh, twelve billion has been lost through corruption in twenty twenty. And that argument that people make, it's a complete fallacy. Anya no cry, say, ten billion has been lost through corruption, eh, twelve billion. Anya no cry, eh, niho sao auditor general's report, mo. Granted, me, me, bah, oh, me, me, eh, Clark, eh, je granted, say, twelve billion, no, abain, add the twelve billion, eh, you know. Ah, o this E level, so, so, so suppose you generate maximum seven billion. O dekam we have been saying, ninety billion. Now, oh, she twenty twenty two budget, now, abain presented for parliament, budget deficit alone is about thirty seven billion. Now, oh, you twenty nine, me, oh, mathematics, mommy, oh, you twenty, eh, nineteen from thirty seven, moi, I ain't a beka. We still have a budget deficit of almost twenty billion. Even with the so-called eh, twelve billionaire, eh, say, through coro, if we're even, we're supposed to, if we're even block that loophole, collect that, all that money, and so seven billion eh, from E level, yeah, they can't win nineteen billion, no. It still doesn't close our deficit gap, gap, no, we still need to get money somewhere. How are you going to finance a deficit? Maybe through borrowing, do we have that luxury?
But do you necessarily have to have a deficit?
That is why deficit.
Do you necessarily have to have a deficit? A deficit only comes in, say, we projected revenue of that hundred billion, ah, okay, one seven, no.
Yes.
And we projected expenditure of around one hundred and thirty seven billion, now, okay, one seven, no. If you know perfectly what was eh, the conditions in the country.
Yes.
That's not allow for you to meet your expenditure program, have a so running there.
Yes.
What stops you from cutting down?
You see, that is a problem. Yeah, oh, oh, te, eh, Sami, oh, te, eh.
Me, eh, friends eh, Kasoa Road.
Now, Kasoa Road, last, you so tall, eh, crown, no, I'm say, even sun, eh, be block here, quite, no, but, nah, how you, they say, yeah, in clear, eh, you know. Are you going to use sun to clear the sun?
No.
Anya, ska?
No.
You are talking of budgets, if you borrow ska, ah, even eh, repayment of interest alone is about, on this budget, about forty something billion CDs. How do you pay? You are talking recurrent expenditure of salaries, government workers, running into billions of Ghana CDs. When you expenditure, now, eh, say, compose, eh, say, oh, yeah. Eh, no, no, cry, no, oh, seek out, eh, no, and do Saska, no, how you say, eh, there will not be budget deficit?
Hmm, so, so then, I asked the question, eh. The deputy minister for finance is quoted as saying, one of the papers reported, that per, the assimilation somewhere, you know.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent of users of these platforms.
Yes.
Are likely to go off.
Yes.
In terms of the utilization of the platform.
Yes.
So already, no, government, now, Kasaa, eh, estimation, that seven billion you are talking about, and it's gonna be shot by that twenty-five percent.
It hasn't, yes.
Oh, to the mechanism.
They have done all this calculation, yes.
So then, again, that deficit still remains, let's say, at the end of the day, they, eh, which weighs some five billion, or let's say, they're which weighs on four billion.
Yes.
That deficit still remains.
Yes.
But how are you going to service that deficit?
That is a problem, eh, exactly.
So the point I'm making is.
That's why, eh, abain, to, to meet that deficit in a way, no, oh, to say, finance minister, so, best, eh, eh, parliament, to cut expenditure of eh, all the ministries by twenty percent. So that's another way of cutting the deficit.
So then, eh, eh, so then, it tells me that the finance minister see the needfulness to prioritize. In reducing the expenditure by twenty percent, it tells me that that expenditure of one hundred and thirty-seven gets reduced by a certain margin.
But you see, the reduction of the twenty percent, no, may not get, may, because of reduction of twenty percent eh, 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 budget, you know. Allocation, no. Roads and highways ministry may not tie my road in Lambusi, where the industry.
Have all, all roads been tarred, even when?
My menka, same eh, I am telling you, I'm mentioning Lambusi because the district was created in twenty seven, two thousand and seven by President Kufu. Up to now, how many years now, there is not an inch of tar road in, in that district. Lambusi district, an inch of tar road.
So, 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 Patrick, so sorry. NDC government came, Lambusi did not see one drop.
A single eh, drop, me, well.
Relax, Patrick, relax. NDC government came.
Yes.
That road did not see one drop.
One inch of tar road.
NDB government has come, four years on, it hasn't seen one drop.
Yes.
At the time, COVID nineteen had, had hit.
Yes.
What tells you that today?
Entona, who you do, if you while monitoring, don't, don't, because nowadays, mo, wo, wo, beh, huh, there was some massive demonstration. Eh, wa, me area, huh, ah, I call Sisala East, near, eh, because of bar roads, Sisala East, Lambusi, eh, you know, we have two Sisala eh, eh, districts and coincidences. We have Sisala East, Lambusi, eh, no, we have, actually have four. We have Sisala East, Sisala West, Sisala eh, 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 Lambusi, Lambusi, Sisala East, Sisala West, and Y East. These are eh, Sisala eh, districts and coincidences.
Andy, give me your pen, eh, sorry, go ahead.
The, the roads are there, eh, in all this are terrible. The, the massive demonstration, cause so last year, and abain promises, eh, afue, ombe, eh, roads, in fact, ombe, eh, some of the roads. Now, oh, be cut to twenty, eh, then, then, now, abain, oh, be catch, eh, say, because of cut, you know, eh, roads, and eh, eh, and demand, eh. And we, we want us to sit down and fold our arms.
Eh, okay, I would, my main painting scenario, we.
Eh, painting.
All these things you are talking about, legitimate.
Yes.
But I ask myself, eh. We have heard.
Yes.
That the finance minister is considering one point five percent.
Yes.
Of the Momo.
Yes.
Tax, maybe, eh, E level tax.
You see, don't even do the calculation, don't waste your time.
No, I, I, relax, relax.
Even if it's one billion or two billion, it's better than nothing, you, you do the reduction.
Yes, so the point I'm trying to make is that.
Two billion, who is there two billion, eh, eh?
That two billion.
Who is there three billion, eh?
I would do. You made a projection.
Is about how much?
Me, bah, me, bah, me, bah.
Construction now, eh, is about how much abain, eh, from E level.
Give me, te, 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 te. You have projected that some seven billion is going to come from this.
It may not be the seven billion.
Relax, 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 relax.
So don't use me.
But that's, that's the figure, it's on six point nine.
It's on six point, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, six point, so it's seven.
Two billion or three billion.
Relax, relax, the point I'm making is this.
One billion is even better than zero.
In the end, in the end.
Yes.
If your argument that one billion is better than zero.
Yes.
Obviously, the projects that government intends to embark on, if it's getting one billion, which is better than zero. Most of them won't be done.
So if, so that song will be done.
So then, it brings us to the question of.
Sami, do you like zero or you want one billion? Who was zero and now who pay one billion? What, do you know how much one, eh, one billion can do? And you know how much zero eh, percent can do?
If that one billion, if that one billion, in the long run, is going to erode a structure, you see, that twenty-five percent has got ripple effect, the twenty-five percent that eh.
It all went down to the reduction.
Mr. Kuma is telling us.
A reduction in the revenue, government knows all this.
If, for instance.
And they're even reducing the rate from one point seven five to one point five. They know what they are doing.
So, no, it's not a matter of they know what they are doing. Eh, me, make a twenty-five percent, no, we, oh, simulation, no, we dekam, oh, no, oh, no.
Yes.
That my cousin, who every month receives three hundred Ghana CDs from me. Will be affected.
How? Also, what, yeah, it means that you have to travel to go and give the money to the, your cousin.
Yes, but the government is not.
And they are, we are greedy, if because of this, your cousin, you stop, you say you won't do the Momo, you won't do Momo, and yet your cousin is denied. It means that you even drive to go and give your cousin the money. You are being greedy, don't use Momo to deny your cousin the money.
No, 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 listen, this is what I mean, if you are just.
What do you mean, listen, let me hear you.
That my cousin, who was going to receive that money via Momo.
Yes.
Receive that three hundred Ghana CDs, intends also transfers, let's say, one fifty CDs to another cousin via Momo.
Yes.
That my cousin will not transfer that money also via Momo. He's off, so the twenty-five percent would captures me, that's not captured that my cousin.
You see. But it is still the three, three eh.
Yes, but that money goes, the money goes, specifically.
I have given the scenario, I have given the scenario here.
The effect, this may have, the cascading effect.
This your calculation that you are doing, you think government doesn't know this calculation you are doing?
Ah, but government knew, and the government started one point five.
You mean they don't understand this, your mathematician, your voodoo mathematician?
Me, I'm not doing voodoo mathematicians, but.
Okay, your mathematician, sorry, I withdraw, I withdraw. Eh, mathematician, oh, god, me, name say, oh, yeah, mathematician. But it's good, you have calculated well.
Yes.
But me, the, me, try, eh, say, if your cousin, you, who the three hundred, who send the three hundred eh, to your cousin, I don't know where your cousin lives. And you want to drive, you say you won't do Momo.
Yes.
You want to drive and buy fuel in your car, and drive to wherever you, where your cousin is.
Oh, I may take Trotro.
It doesn't matter, oh, where you see ska, Trotro, say, you're free, Trotro, eh, free.
Yes.
And now, now, Trotro, Ghana Trotro, you know, eh.
Make your point, you know.
You still take, go and take Trotro, pay money, then drive, and go and give your cousin money, and drive, your cousin, you also, they, three hundred, no, they come, ah, no, also, person, oh, send one fifty more, be. Lip, ah, no, be, be, one, so, now, also, have a car. And so, I drive, yeah, come, ah, no, eh, eh, if that is why you prefer to paying additional charge to sit in the comfort of your home and send in a, any day, eh, your, uh, what decision? And government knows that this is likely to happen, that is why, oh, move cars, eh, it may reduce by twenty-five percent. But still, they want to go ahead with it, because they know that seventy-five percent is better than zero. Or even fifty percent is better than zero. So whatever it is, that's what government is pushing. My, I say, look, nobody wants to pay taxes anywhere in the world, nobody. But why do we go to collect monies? Look, many of the countries that will go to collect eh, eh, loans, any name, oh, guys, eh, some do not have eh, eh, like, gold in any name, eh, whoa. It's taxes now, oh, more, you feel, oh, more, oh, oh, more citizens, oh, and no, nah, eh, yeah, eh, so, eh, 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 then they put interest on it for us to pay. In any case, loans, eh, eh, you know, and you are buying a bit, eh, oh. The loans, eh, eh, Ghana debt profile, to, eh, eh, three hundred and forty-four billion CDs, three hundred and forty-four billion, so, guys, eh, President Kuvan, eh, never, eh, yeah. It is not, it is Ghanaians who are going to pay. Do we want to continue to pay something small to lessen the borrowing, so that we not pay the loans with interest? Or you want government to borrow, so that we use the, the tax as more to pay the loans and deny us development in this country? Those alternative choices we have to make as a country. I've heard argument about, some people, if we come to the nitty-gritty of it, it is my, well, it's stealing, I have my, if you have your money, you save your money. If you don't want to transfer, nobody will tax you, you put your money in your wallet and save it as a saving, nobody will tax you. When people say they are taxing your savings, they are taxing your, if you have your money, you don't transfer, who will tax you? Oh, oh, wallet, to phone, eh, whoa, eh, whoa, hundred million, oh, so, ah, nah, say, want transfer, oh, oh, be, oh, be, be, to me, ah, but, oh, phone, so, ajio, seeka.
You see, I, I didn't want to go there.
Go, come there.
But what the manna?
Go there, bruh.
Many Andy, or a private man.
Yes.
Andy, see, Sami, I'm creating this platform.
Yes.
Where you can save your money, where you can transfer, at the end of the day, I will even give you interest for keeping your money on this platform.
You are come there, you have come there.
Yes. Now, Patrick, let me land, let me land. So that businessman, I make that arrangement with that businessman, and I'm comfortable with it.
Oh, no, no, why?
The telcos. The businessman is the telcos, that infrastructure called mobile money, that infrastructure.
Hey.
That infrastructure.
You think that if government had not both used billions of our money, taxpayers' money to fiber, or text in the name, eh, to create the infrastructure, the telcos will be able to do what they are doing?
And the telcos are using, and the telcos are using it for free?
Ah, their money, how much are they paying, how much, how much are they paying? Can you tell me how much they are paying?
To decide, eh, they charge, oh, charging, eh, say, sure, I'm not saying sure, but let me land, you are interrupting me.
So, eh, no, I don't need panelists.
That's all, I'm, we, some question, I mean, you, eh, eh, my, me, Kase, Andy, yeah, oh.
Panelists.
My menji, Andy, you should, you should.
Eh, my, eh, what, Lucy, me?
Because, oh, yeah, me, say, me, eh, panelists.
All distance. And I'm gonna call town hall meeting now. See, I, you were John Kumayaka, meaning he said, after the resistance in Asifon and Amoye, this town hall meeting. Ghana four, they have made up their mind. I, I'll be the last person to be against any steps to be taken by governments, not this particular, I say governments, to regain revenue, to prosecute it's normal agenda. I'll be the last person. But sometimes, you must be very circumspect, given the current circumstances and the living condition of the people. Especially when we are told that, listen, this COVID nineteen, it's a global, it's a tried knowledge, how it has wreaked havoc on global economies, and Ghana, we are not exception. So, yes, if you want to come out with a policy, you need to be at least considerate. That is why initially, I said, that, I mean, I didn't know the thinking that went into it. One percent, okay, keep the road toll, you decided to scrub the whole road toll, the little that you are getting. You see, and I'm happy that my brother, you see, you know, so I was, I was listening to him. My brother said, as for the road toll, it's good that they've abolished the road toll. Now he's talking that even one billion is, is money. So the road toll is not money. No, Sammy, when he says the devil, he quotes the Bible. I would say, if you want billion, say, Sanokati, will you calculate me? Or say, even one billion is money, in the road toll, need a yes card?
Seventy-eight billion.
No, 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 no. What are you talking about? Road toll, yes card?
Seventy-eight million, yes card.
Yeah, Apple crown, show to Gumo.
Yeah, minimum.
So, and I make a set, keep the road toll, maybe I could, Bobo see a crowd, they've tore their roads, what are you talking about? Now we are told that twenty-five percent in Kofa Amoye transaction, they'll be off the bracket. So your project in Kano, massa, you can't even get a six point nine billionaire Okano. And look at the resistance, look at the resistance. So, Abayuno, yes, government, so move the policy back, and yes, obetra, who offers, those in transient stance, you need to be attitude, you are saying, yeah, 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 yeah. Massa, sure, you are giving the mandate by the people just to govern. Yeah, you know, you're in Tminca, say, you're quite a finance minister. In the two million, Ghana four, the money, Pabaku, and then, and then, and then, do that, Quakupuado. And also, what, now, Panfor, say, oh, massa, Mumbambe, Boame. So when you are there, that doesn't mean say you won't listen to people, engage people. Sure, Oco, uh, 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 Ho, Omasi Market View, just after drop home. Market View, Omasi, or Ho, in Kofa, no, so, Omo, Oco. Because they were not concerned, there was no engagement, that was not their need. So in policy formulation, there is something we call need assessment, you diagnose what their problems are. What is what I'm gonna, so, into town hall meeting, and I'm gonna move here, yeah. And I'd be a Ghana for better, so, oh, eh, yeah, addy, addy, eh, sikabe ba, ama, yeah, 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 sikadi, eh, eh, puntojuma, yeah, yeah. It's okay, and you see, for, eh, ma, me, yes, I was so car same be. And I always say, said, for us, to be independent, we must be seen to be doing certain things on our own, not to be going with cap in hand, roaming, looking for money. Because, they say, given the COVID nineteen and the ravages, you know, Omo, Krabuniska. So, the independence and the Ghana beyond it, if you want to breathe life into it, then these are some of the things we need to do. But you can't do it when you don't consult, when you don't engage in this, eh, 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 town hall meeting. Now you are doing the town hall meeting, in Kofa, they have made up their mind.
So much.
But, number two, does he also mean, because I've heard the finance minister making this forceful argument, say, say, eleven, ah, ma, eh, Oma, I'm praying, ma, yeah, 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 I'm passing, I'm, yeah, started the implementation of that policy now, the economy will suffer. Does he mean, say, there is no other avenue for us to regain revenue? Does he mean that, listen, we are bereft of ideas as a country, fine, if that.
It will serve the task.
Meba, meba, if that is the situation, I think that, you were coming before, Nini, IFS, Ie Jumabi, about how Ghana should take advantage, and the commanding high in the extractive sectors. So, listen, the extractive sectors are paying just peanuts to us, in terms of tax, go there.
What was the suggestion given there?
Oh, the extractive sectors, he said, no, we should, we should go in there.
And do what?
Do more tax.
No, he, he talks about monetization of that, if you look at his statement, that day, monetization of extractive royalties in there to get money. And then, I know, now, I'm minded by the, in form of, eh, Ajapa. Read the statement well.
No, no, wait, 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 wait.
Ajapa, as a vehicle, as an instrument, was not a bad idea.
Nobody said Ajapa is a bad idea.
Nobody said Ajapa was a bad idea.
No.
It is, it is.
We'll come there another day.
You may can I say, we should be looking at other ways, eh, yeah, they be wrecking revenue. But also, inasmuch as forcefully, I've heard the arguments, from you, Rafenyo Markin, to finance minister, you were John Kumaya, Okanwe, Krow, so, you'll find some ways to bring the people back, though initially, eh, eh, they were, they were, they were not accommodative in terms of the, the eleven, you know, they'll find a way to bring them back, because the research has shown, and has provided, eh, eh, how to, to, to hold them back, fine. But, Sammy, one other issue, and I, I'm not, it's about governments, the reckless spending of Yessica. Eh, so, so, British Parliament, so, Omo, Konya, Motiso, Oti Benso, you go to them for money. Adam Boy, the V eight, look at the V eight, I'm moving in Amco, V eight. Eh, V eight, I'm muti, pop, 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 chief, V eight, in Kwan. So, listen, you are telling Ghanaians that, listen, you're my way, eh, yeah, yeah, sikadi, eh, put in Juma, then you must also spend wisely, you must be prudent in your expenditure. Yeah, me say, you were, Nana Kufa, the buyer, Oma, order be said, no ministries, the department, and, and, and talk us.
For the patto gopio.
So, but, but they say, Omo, To.
Omo, To, oh, he's been lifted.
So, 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 Omo, To, does he mean, say, car, no, car, no. Sammy, you see, when you do this, and you come to Ghanaians, say, Oba, betas, Oma, Obia, I'm petaxo, Obia, I'm petso, obetu, attacks. That, ah, ma, we must be frank with it, but tax, you know, so now, Omo, did, yeah, put to Juma. So governments must be prudent in their expenditure. Who, who, who are traffic, man, I'm about to sing with sirens, V eight, bo, 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 now, Nipah, Obia, I'm, I'm, attacks.
At least it has reduced, eh, damp, damp, or, 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 yeah, Moma, I'm better, same.
So you see, governments.
They, they don't want to be dumperized.
Other song, they must be prudent.
Pin, 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 a, a, subsided.
And they should be looking at other innovative ways, ah, I mean, to, to regain revenue, we must block the leakages and the cypresses. We are talking of digitizing this country, for which, for which Ghana, I think, we've won the applause for, eh, we've been applauded by a transportation international. Massa, so, if you are digitizing, now, and then, twenty-five percent, and you're new, you were John Kuma, the gospel according to the deputy finance minister, twenty-five percent of the people will not carry on with this transaction, you are defeating this very agenda. So, Sammy, yeah, seeing as much as, they're best supporting government efforts to regain revenue, because without Sika, you need to mention, Juma. Oh, Minya, and I like that crusade, the Lambuse district, he's been championing that, and I think that the government must listen. No, my brother is suffering.
I'm suffering.
No, my brother is suffering. No, my brother can't go to his hometown.
You see, the only, the only reason why he can't go to his hometown is because he doesn't drive a V eight. If he were to be driving a V eight, he would go and come.
So, my, my point is that, you see.
So I should wait.
He wants to make use of what he, he, you see, so the point is that they should go and construct his, wait for him, so that he can go. With his, if it is, eh, truck, truck, I bet me, they are caught, what they are say, and yes, I got truck, truck, before, I, 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 no, no, I, boo, boo. You understand what I'm saying? And government, I'm happy, say, Ose, road minister said then.
If the, the need arises for them to.
And yet, you need arises, oh, as I say, oh, yeah, decision now, I'll take you, you know, massa, was not backed by science and data. Science, that, that decision now, will, will take you that, that, that night, was not backed by science and data.
It will be difficult to back, because you see, the reasoning behind the removal of the two boots, you know, was that, at the traffic bar. You see, I call climate change conference, Aba, you're beside pollution, because, you know, I, I, who's the two boots, you know? How, how do we come back? With this, with this lingering, how do we give back?
Ah, Omo, back, Krum, no, to, to boot, oh, they go on, to boot, oh. Eh, me, bra, we can, you, Oco, 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 Kaswa, that's a, no, yes, too. To, to, no, grand, no, yes, too. He was supporting it.
Sammy.
Listen, as for the toll, listen, eh, you were, my Quata, has nothing to say, say, their evil is worth considering, they should bring it back.
Sammy.
It was not a decision well thought through, and we must just tell them in the face.
Sammy, eh, wouldn't even say, eh, me, nah, toe boot, eh, the men, eh, maybe I've said it publicly, but I think there have been superior arguments against the MP. You see, and one of the reasons why I'm in Peckura, eh, is still happening.
Sammy.
And, Mameka say.
Sammy, I would say, one billion Christ card.
Yeah.
Is justification for the eleven.
Seventy-eight, seventy-eight, eighty million, yes, card, until.
Ten thousand graph from toe boot, no.
Yes, card. You say, there's superior arguments, there've been superior arguments, as you say, I'm, I have, I'm backtracking. I must admit publicly, say, may, reasons, I remember, eh, say, I'm in, eh, toe boot, to Nene, Amano, those toe boots, the, the roads are so choked with traffic. And they may, I think I have to eat the armor.
Armor, yes.
The, eh, minister, wait there, they say, it's kitty, what, being true.
Now, me, be so, until for all these times, ah.
Sammy, I want to go to the, eh, 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 no, the twelve billionaire, I'm also through corruption, eh, public accounts, eh, auditor general's report, you know, I want to go there. The road toll, no, my men, Koho, road toll, need, eh, yeah, they bar, no problem, if it's.
Auditor General, yeah.
Wouldn't say, there's been this, and unfortunately, members of parliament, including Omo, more public accounts committee, ah, that committee is chaired by minority. Eh, they keep on saying, say, eleven, no, Gavankodi, eh, twelve billionaire, eh, eh, Lucy, through corruption. In twenty-twenty, twenty, auditor general's report, you are, will not need, eh, eh, six, eh, seven billion from eleven. I have shown, say, even with all, we still need money. But that is a fallacy, that, that argument, that, that suggestion, say, twelve billion was lost through corruption in the twenty-twenty auditor general report. Nah, nah, information, you know, on my phone, so, man, for my phone, but, but as council, remember, they say, over ten billion CDs of that money, by through loans, that recoverable loans. Recoverable, yes, it be, be a recoverable, eh, then, it means, who bet imagine? Check, everybody should go and check, those who make that argument, go and check twenty-twenty auditor general's report. If you have sat table, now, also, no, say, whether twelve billion was lost through corruption, ten, ten billion, over ten billion, so, the loans, eh, they are, eh, I bet, I recover, ten, twelve billion, ten billion, eh, loans, eh, they are, eh, I, eh, I recover. So how do we, say, say, all the twelve billion was lost through corruption? The, the rest of the two billionaire channel, there have been some, eh, 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 a bit, a bit of harm, misapplication of funds. Eh, be, eh, see, I'm finding a project, be, and I'm finding, eh, they are share her. And they are genuine ones, are very, a small amount, eh, yeah, embezzled, and oh, dear, that is why we should prosecute those who have embezzled our money. If we don't take action, say, Obia, the Sika, through auditor general, eh, Juma, you are, I didn't, for, be, say, Wajigana, Ska, Wedi. They say, Papa, well, Koji, eh, what hospital, be, what, Tamale, Okai, seventy-something, now, they are sharing a boot, oh. If we, those ones are out, those ones are corrupt cases, causes of corruption, acts of corruption, Sammy, panel, if you want to show, say, we are serious, those are the people we should be prosecuting. That way, if we prosecute, then Ghanaians will know, say, we are doing.
Reference, you know, for, for purposes of the conversation, you know.
Yes.
Meet me, Eddie, I'm, I'm, for, the table you're referencing.
Reading, reading, I'm, sure.
Table one, summary of financial irregularities, for the period ended thirty-first December, twenty-twenty.
Okay.
One, type of irregularity, that's how the auditor general classifies these items, irregularities. Outstanding debtors, loans recoverable, slash, okay, outstanding debtors, slash, loans recoverable. Eh, it constitutes seventy-eight point three percent of the amount.
Mention the actual figure.
Which is around ten, eh, billion. Ten billion.
Yes.
Then it goes to cash irregularities, which is around one point eight billion.
Cash irregularities, what does he say about that one?
Eh, the cash irregularities, it doesn't explain.
Okay.
It doesn't explain.
Okay.
Payroll irregularities, and also, so, what's it, it's around nine point five million.
Okay.
And procurement irregularities, and also, eh, around eight hundred and forty-six million.
Yes.
Then it talks about tax irregularities, and also, eh, around twenty-nine million.
Yes.
Then stores irregularities, contracts irregularities, eh, Nini, nah, to Kabomwa, then it brings you to the two thousand, but you see.
So that is my point.
The point we made is this, that all these irregularities are captured by the auditor general.
Yes.
If debtors who owe.
Yes.
Their debts are collected.
Yes.
We have money.
Exactly.
But, but.
I agree with you, but to say, say, it is corruption, that it is lost through corruption, that's my point, is it corruption?
You see, the auditor general described the item as an irregularity.
Irregularity, is irregularity, corruption.
Listen, 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 but, oh, me, me, you're the third general, what do I say?
Sammy, eh, eh, bro, oh, eh, bro, oh.
But, so, we're describing debt, so, we do, we can, say, eh, irregularity.
Is it corruption?
How is that?
It's debt corruption, it's a, me, Ma, Kobank, Ma, Kobank, Akoji, Ska.
Genuine business, what they make up?
Sammy, Sammy, Sammy.
When you're, eh, how does that amount to an irregularity? It's not an irregularity.
So we should even be questioning the classification of auditor general, Sammy, my member, so, who, Kobank?
Valid point.
We should even be questioning the way, that's why, because, who did, eh, me, Ma, Kobank, Akoji, Ska. As can I, me, gee, eh, me, eh, then the bank will follow me to collect the money, you classify that as irregular, maybe a default in payment, maybe that's what they are saying. Default, but that's it, it's not, I'm not pay.
Government is not a bank.
I would say, who, now, the.
What do I say?
So how is, how is this classified as corruption?
That is why I think they are describing it as an irregularity.
But is it corruption, even if it is granted?
Under what circumstance, what do I say, and that state institution, and our state agent, who did sikabe, Mobi? Under what circumstance?
Some are banks, oh, some are banks.
Yeah, so, so, Sammy.
Report to the, some are banks, actually, eh, some are banks.
The auditor general's report, I have a problem with it, in that, some, in the preparation of the report, and they uncover some malfeasance, now. Omo, prepare report, you know, then they write to, and Kofa, now, involve for their response. I am told reliably, say, before, even the public accounts committee, eh, ever started discussion, now, Kofa, no, are salvaged.
Some of the things, before they, some of the things have been collected.
So you see, let's, now, the public accounts committee, now, should be telling the auditor general, they say, so, who, who uncover, be, be, in, in course of your investigation? And you write to that institution, say, Omo, Omo.
Unrecover something, rectify.
Omo, recover.
When they do, include it.
Include it in your final report, alright.
Oh, I'm making, I'm breaking, bra, nah, meba, nah, I feel, you know.
Topic, we, eh, we, eh.
Yeah, yeah, who engage whilst we take our viewers and our listeners as well.
We, eh, topic, say, eh, twelve corrupt, twelve million lost through corruption, corruption.
And I cry, you need time, the next, you must have, ah.
We should finish it, yeah, yeah, ma, yes, eh, 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 different group, now, eh, eh.
Live on happy ninety-eight point nine FM, eh, eh, you know, I, eh, be, you be, your phone line is not to, not, Oma's phone, so, Omo, be fair, no, by the time they come, then you can make a comment before they come. I made a proper comment in the moment, it's, we, yeah, we, chum, I, 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 they, I'm, but, so, I'm holding me hostess, ah.
Now, eh, but, now, oh, oh, yeah, by, who far calls?
Look, the intimidation must end. The intimidation must end.
We need a view, sir, the feedback.
The situation where you guys play victims, victims, and then, I am the person, who is the, eh, eh, you know, Muncha, is, ah, no, mano, they be, I'm, play victims, aren't they?
We need the feedback.
Zero two four four eight eight five one four zero, zero two four four eight eight five one four zero, and a zero five four nine five zero eight six eight seven. Hello, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. John.
Yes, sir, but, oh, didn't, eh, eh, for me, no.
I was, eh, good morning, eh.
Yes, sir.